Let's go ahead and take up items, the shelter items, 177 through 179, as we said we would this afternoon. Councilmember Kitchen, do you want to make a motion?
I move passage of all three items.
Okay, we're going to consider all three items at the same time. Is there a second to that? Councilwoman Ellis seconds the motion. We have some speakers to speak. Do you want to speak first, or should I go and start recognizing people?
Well, I don't want to speak first, but I do have some questions for staff.
Okay, you want to do that first, or after the speakers?
Yeah, I think maybe if we could take, and the reason I want to take that first is because there was some additional backup provided, both by our interim homeless strategy officer and by our real estate office. And I think that the backup that they posted today may respond to at least some of the questions. So I'd just like to ask, I think I have three questions for them.
Go ahead.
Okay. My first question, I think it may be with regard to the acquisition timeline. So my understanding is that best-case scenario is about a 60-day acquisition timeline. And then I'm also understanding that the ultimate price that the council, that the city might pay for something would be based on fair market value as well as negotiations. And so those are questions for you to confirm, and also if you could just briefly go over what the due diligence process is for acquisition.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Alex Gale, interim officer for the Office of Real Estate Services. Our typical due diligence is what we typically want to have done is a third-party appraisal of the property, lead and asbestos testing, environmental site assessment, as well as a property condition report. And so all four of those reports that we are having done on the property, we anticipate having those back by July 31st. If we can, depending on how those come back, we would want to, you know, if we need to renegotiate something depending on the, what those reports come back as, we would hope the landowner would agree to that, and we would hopefully be able to close within 30 days of that, which would be basically by the end of August, within that timeframe from between July 31st to the end of August to close on that property. And so, yes, that is a, what we do is we have a third-party appraisal completed on that property, which, within the backup, we also talk about the difference between what that third-party appraisal is compared to what the Travis County appraisal district's assessed value is, and what those differences are depending on the timing of when we do it. We also, when our appraisal consultant goes, actually is able to go into the property and see what upgrades are done to that property to understand it. As well as when TCAD assesses the value, there are some possible exemptions that are taken into consideration for that assessed value. And then as well as whenever a landowner definitely has a financial motive to successfully try and lower what that assessed value is. And so that's what some of those differences are between what our fair market value may be compared to what the TCAD assessed value is.
Okay, thank you. And is it accurate to state that as a city, we don't pay more than fair market value, and that's one reason we do appraisals?
Correct.
Okay.
So for every property that we want to acquire, we have a third-party appraisal done to determine what that fair market value is. And so we want to make sure that we don't pay anything more than what is fair market value for the property.
Okay, thank you. I have two questions for our homeless strategy officer. And, thank you. So, and this is also information that is in backup. So could you just speak to the process that you all went through? And, you know, I don't know if that's you and real estate or whoever went through, that the staff went through for the process of searching for a property after we, the council voted to initiate this process on January 31st. So could you just speak to the process you all went through for searching a property?
Councilmember Veronica Brucenio, I'm the interim homeless strategy officer. We did begin our process after passage of this resolution from council. It included not only working with the individuals in our own office, but also a team across the city, including individuals from our housing department, our health department, and our real estate office. In looking at properties, the resolution, as you recall, referred to looking at both city-owned land and properties that are on the market. We evaluated about 30 city-owned properties, as well as about 70 privately-owned properties through this process. When we were vetting processes, we looked at the list of criteria that were outlined in that resolution, including not directly adjacent to a neighborhood, proximity to major corridors, access to public transportation, site and size acreage of the property, access to healthcare, access to case management and social service providers, and the current condition of the site, as well as any environmental considerations. So with that list of criteria, several, the majority of the properties were eliminated. And that's how we were able to move forward this recommendation of the site that you're considering today.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question, if you could speak to it with regard to, and this is also in the backup, the community outreach process. And also, you know, we've talked about the fact that, this is in the backup, that one of the aspects of this item, of item 179, is to develop a legally binding restriction on the property. I'll speak to that more later because I do have some direction with regard to pursuing that legally binding restriction. But I know that you have in your backup some language about the process of community outreach. So could you speak to that?
Absolutely. We have been having discussions with our community engagement team here at the City of Austin on how we can work with not only the community at large, but also the immediate, the neighbors in the vicinity, the residents in the vicinity, as well as business owners in the vicinity, and in addition to our stakeholders that are working in this area of homelessness. We will, as we move forward with the item today, we will develop a plan so that we can receive input on how we, as a city, can be a good neighbor on this property. We want to take into account the concerns of the residents and the business owners in the immediate area.
Okay, thank you. I'll speak to my direction later. And that direction relates to the restrictions on the property and the process of working with the community to develop those restrictions. So thank you. That's all the questions I have right now.
So I'm going to call the people to speak, consistent with the way that I do that. There are some people that are speaking in favor of this, some people speaking against this. The first 20 people that get a chance to speak, speak for three minutes. People pass the first 20, get one minute to speak. I'm going to generally, not exactly, kind of rotate between people speaking, some for and some against. Again, the first 20 speakers will speak for three minutes, and after that, it's for one minute. I'm calling speakers on 177, 178, and 179 at the same time. First speaker is going to be Ray Collins. Is Mr. Collins here? And then on deck will be Ellis Peterson. Is Ellis Peterson here? You'll be up at this podium. You have time donated by Sean Whalen. Is Sean Whalen here? Okay, so when you come up, Mr. Peterson, you'll have five minutes. Mr. Collins, you have three minutes. You can go ahead.
May I have a slide, please? My name is Ray Collins. This is, the slide you're about to see is Echo Executive Director Ann Howard's slide at 8:14 into her council work session briefing on February 13th, 2018. I bring it to you today to call your attention to Councilmember Kazar's remarks at the June 4th council work session to the effect that the capacity of the proposed housing-focused shelter on Ben White must balance facility funding and services funding. An imbalance of the two will not allow the shelter to operate within the NAEH guidelines council has chosen. The proposed capacity is 50 to 100 beds. My interest is that the number of people actually in residence be frequently evaluated and adjusted to the NAEH guidelines, taking into account our present limitations on outflow and future improvement of same. I say to you that it is, this is essential for success as portrayed in the slide, and that the success of this Ben White facility is essential to model future facilities around Austin. Slide off, please. Finally, I want to identify myself as one of the supporters of a housing-focused shelter who is interested in having the NAEH guidelines codified in a restrictive covenant. I can see we're thinking along the same lines. Up to and including closure of the facility if the NAEH guidelines are not achieved. I'm going to be involved at some level in the restrictive covenant discussion simply because I know some of the people involved. And if council chooses, I would appreciate being involved as chair of the contact team in the budding area to the south. Finally, I hope council will acknowledge, as I do, that City Manager Kronk has accomplished an amazing feat. He's located a property literally a stone's throw from campers in the Green Belt, near people living under Ben White, a little under two miles from Austin's most successful nonprofit for finding housing on a Camp Metro route, and near healthcare. All this while successfully executing council's direction that the property not be adjacent to a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Peterson, is Estray, is Avellio Estray Caneda here? You'll be up next. Go ahead, sir.
So I'd like to address the restrictive covenant first. It's not clear how a restrictive covenant on the property would address the road right-of-way, as well as the railroad right-of-way, directly adjacent, especially considering the ordinance that would take some of APD's enforcement power with regard to public camping. We've reduced that power. So the neighborhood has some concerns about, you know, what the city is going to do to ensure that we don't see, you know, increased camps and attraction of, you know, homeless individuals who desire to be in the facility but cannot get in because the facility is at capacity. And what I mean by that is if we have 300 individuals that come with a desire of getting in the facility, but it can only house 100, where does the remaining 200 go? And I think that it's reasonable to expect that some of that population ends up camping in the neighboring right-of-way. And that's a concern of the neighborhood. Fiscally, there's a concern here, too, just in terms of the thrift of how these services are being provided. I looked at the cost of this facility over the next 40 years. At the $8.6 million purchase price and the $2.3 million operating budget per the Austin Monitor, and this is while not considering renovation costs, it's about $101 million over a 40-year period. And my question is, is this the most efficient way to handle the situation? And just for the sake of discussion, I did a cost analysis on, not a realistic alternative, but I'm just trying to provide some context here. So I looked at what it would cost to house the same number of people in a luxury hotel. I looked at the W. Austin, and I found out that it would cost about $263 for a room with two queen-size beds. So in this analysis, I'm assuming that people are sharing beds. And again, I understand that that's not a perfect comparison, but I'm just trying to draw a parallel here. That cost over a 40-year period is $96 million. That's $5 million less for a luxury hotel. But this is not the most concerning aspect of this. The property in question originally sold for $2.32 million in 2009. 10 years later, the city is preparing to buy it for $8.6 million. That is a 270% property valuation, which is extraordinary. I think it would be hard to find other examples of that in the city. An appraisal, I think, would help clarify some of the concerns about the price point of that facility. But we would ideally like to see that appraisal here for review at council for you all to make your decision before you actually vote on that.
Thank you very much. That was your time.
That was five minutes?
The next speaker that we have is Melissa, no, come on up, sorry. After you, is Melissa Nazamzadeh here? Melissa Nazamzadeh? You'll be up speaking after this speaker. Go ahead, sir, state your name, please.
Good afternoon, councilmembers.
What? You did have time that was donated. Come on back up. If we didn't time you right, I apologize for that. So you have two more minutes.
Yes, thank you. So additionally, when we look at the zoning of the property, it's a limited office zoning. Transitional housing is not an approved use in this zoning district. When the city originally zoned this property, they did not consider it a good location for a shelter. The statements that are made about the community outreach on this are disingenuous. Neither myself, nor any of my neighbors, nor anyone that we're aware of who owns property within a mile of this location has spoken to city staff about this issue. Additionally, this item was put on the city agenda on Friday, a minimum of three business days prior to it being heard, which is the minimum required by the Texas Open Meetings Act. We desire a good-faith gesture on the part of the city to meet with us and to discuss our concerns in open forum. And maybe we can find a middle ground. This does not feel like a good-faith effort to meet the community halfway. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. So Mr. Estray, come on up, and then Melissa Nazamzadeh will be up here. Introduce yourself, please. You have three minutes.
Sure. Avellio Estray Caneda. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I live 1.8 miles from the new transitional housing that's being proposed. I am just here to share that there are some of us in the community who are not threatened by this and do not fear it, and are, in fact, happy to welcome a place of transition where people can find a new life and a new way forward. I think there's a lot of confusion that people in the community have that this will become Arch 2.0. Those of us who've read through the materials so graciously provided by much of the council understand that that's not the case. You can't walk in the front door here and get services. You need to be referred in, from what I understand. That makes a massive difference. No one has a need to camp out outside waiting for that. I just, you know, I know you're going to hear many voices today that are very worried about this. Many people are going to say, "This was never zoned for this. This is too expensive." Well, Austin's a changing city with a growing homeless population. We see many of them under the bridges of Ben White. And this is a great way, I think, to address it. And there are people like myself who are eager to stand up, welcome it. And you may even see volunteering there and bringing our skills. So thank you for your care and this election.
Thank you. Is Tanner Sarand here? You'll be up next. Go ahead, introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Melissa Nazamzadeh, a resident of Southwood, and deeply disappointed in how this was handled, announced, and proposed. I'm concerned that we were notified about this new development Friday night, and the voting for this issue, or just the proposal for this issue, takes place three days later, three business days later. So let me walk you through how irresponsible it has been on your part. It is troubling that the council never spoke with us in the neighborhood to understand any concerns and to help us understand what services and plans the city has in place. It is the city's job to keep us safe. And not only have you failed to communicate your plans and how you would be different, how this would be different than outside of the arch, you have failed to demonstrate this, especially with the repeal of the ordinances relating to panhandling and camping. You have already failed to demonstrate your ability to keep the public safe near the current Arch building. Believe me, I'm a volunteer there. I have to be escorted out of that building when I go and volunteer. Now there are these services coming to my area, and I am concerned about the safety of myself as a female. I have zero faith in your ability to keep this neighborhood safe. Since moving to the neighborhood two years ago, it witnessed the homeless camping and the wandering increase, and it is disappointing. There was a murder down the street from my house, outside of the taco joint. There was a family member held at knife point. And there was a rape by a homeless man near Manchak, again, all near my house. In the previous meeting with Ann Kitchen, someone on stage noted that we're two different kinds of homeless people. Those that were truly trying to get help, and believe me, I want to help those people, and then those who are not seeking help and do not want to find a home. It is those people that I am most concerned about. What are we doing to address those individuals? How are you going to address the safety of the constituents in that neighborhood with those people who are not seeking the help, who do not want to find a home, and who don't want to, you know, be helped? What can you do? This proposed shelter does not solve for that, and it only perpetuates the issue and promotes public health concerns. Not only is it the concerns with drug addicts, alcoholics, but also with petty crime, theft, and harassment. That, when you look at the public statistics, is only going to increase by the amount of people that you're bringing into the neighborhood. Now, take a step back. There are four schools in that area. Would you send your kids to those school? Would you bike and would you walk next to that and have someone harass you? Because I'm constantly harassed when I do that. I go to the Randal's, I bike, and there is a person harassing me in the corner while I want to lock my bike up. Would you ask your family to walk that path and be harassed? What are you going to do to keep these people safe? Again, let's differentiate between the two different types. Of course, I want to help the individuals who want to be helped, and let's, like, ensure that there's a plan for that, but let's also ensure that there's something being done to keep your constituents safe. That is your job as the city to do so.
Thank you. Just state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Tanner Sarand, and I'll probably hit on a few of the same points that Melissa did, but I think it's important that you hear them at least twice, and I'm guessing you'll probably hear them a few more times. We bought our house in the Southwood neighborhood two years ago. It's our first house, and we plan on being there a long time. We love our house, and we love our neighborhood. What is going on under the overpass at Ben White and Manchak and the surrounding area is an absolute outrage and a complete failure on your part as a city council. I drive past it every day on the way to work, and it gets worse every day. Last year, there was a homicide, there was a rape, and my cousin was held at knife point, simply walking to go get a cup of coffee. These are just a few of the examples. We attended a town hall by Ann Kitchen's office. Someone from her office noted the difference between the different types of homeless people, and it's important that we don't bucket them together. Some folks are on tough times, they're looking to get out, and they're looking to make a better life. We all want to support them. Some people have made a decision to live life differently, and that is their prerogative. That said, you know, when I drive to work in the morning, at night, they are sitting there, under the overpass, drinking, doing drugs, doing illegal activities, sitting on couches. It's outrageous. They leave trash everywhere. So you can understand how infuriating it is for us as residents that you have the audacity to use taxpayer money to overpay for a piece of real estate in a residential area which will only have 100 beds for broader city use. Simple math confirms that the proposed shelter would make virtually no impact to the dozens, if not hundreds, of people who have chosen to live at Ben White and Manchak and the surrounding areas. These people are terrorizing our community, and you are doing nothing. You start this session by singing "Happy Birthday." You push this issue to the afternoon. You do a seat reassignment after making us sit here all day just to be heard. You are tone deaf. And I have no doubt that you have tied the police hands. I have no doubt that you have tied the police hands on this issue because I have a very hard time believing our fearless protectors in blue have made the decision to ignore the dangerous and criminal behavior that is occurring in plain sight in our neighborhood. So the answer to this proposal is an emphatic no from our neighborhood, and at the very least, until you have effectively dealt with the absolutely ridiculous situation at Ben White, Manchak, and the surrounding areas.
Is Andres Ramos here? Andres Ramos? And then is Tanner Sarand here? That was you, I'm sorry. Is Cleo Petric here? And then you have time donated to you from Mary Monday. Is Mary Monday here? Mary Monday here? No? So you'll have three minutes when you speak.
Sir, Mayor Adler, Councilmember Kitchen, and the city council. Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Andres Ramos. I live at 3604 Fleetwood Drive, a stone's throw away from the homeless shelter, the proposed homeless shelter. I moved to Austin three years ago when the Governor Abbott appointed my friend and mentor to be the Commissioner of Public Education. He asked me to move down with him from Dallas to help run the public schools. And I've been here ever since, and South Lamar is now my neighborhood. Every day when I drive under Ben White, I wonder how some of those men and women, how their situations could have been different had they been fortified by the same quality of education that I had received when I was a young man. I wonder, in certain circumstances, how we, as a society, have failed those men and women. I am speaking today in favor because I don't want to see our community fail them again. I haven't had the best track record with the homeless in my neighborhood. Someone broke through my backyard and, by removing one of my fences, the planks to my fence. I've had my car broken into. I have my bike stolen. But I want this shelter near my house, not because I want these incidents to continue happening. I want it because studies show that if we provide these services to them, incidents like this will be curbed, not exacerbated. There are a lot of questions to be addressed about logistics, beds. I think a lot of my neighbors and the folks that I've been talking to would appreciate serious consideration of a police substation. But I'm asking you guys to put this in our backyard because I want to show you guys, and I think the South Lamar neighborhood can show you guys, what our community is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you speak, is Hallie Nuth here? Hallie Nuth? You'll be at this podium. Go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is-
You have three minutes.
My name is Cleo Petrusik. And I live in Barton U. neighborhood. I am a former juvenile probation officer and social worker. And I grew up in one of the poorest areas of South Dallas. My parents are immigrants from Mexico. My best friend was shot and killed in front of me when I was growing up. We had a homeless person, even with the limited means that we had, we hadn't had a homeless person live with us. I've had a refugee family stay with us several times in the last 10 years. They're from Zimbabwe. They've lived in our house in Dallas that we built, and the house we had in Austin that we've just built. I've even slept on the floor when their home was flooded. We helped a homeless man get off the streets. We even took showers in our home, and we ate lunch together regularly. As a former probation officer and social worker, I care for social issues deeply. It was my profession. When it comes to my safety and the safety of my family, I will fiercely, I will fiercely choose that every single time. The city released this proposal location on Friday. That is not enough time. I'm a full-time mom, and I care for my disabled mother who has brain damage. That means I take her a shower and I feed her. In the midst of rushing around for my son, trying to learn more about this location on a Friday night, and then I have to wait till Monday because it's the weekend, obviously. I'm trying to inform neighbors, businesses, schools, developers, organize a petition, which I have in front of me, have interviews with news stations so that other neighbors that are calling me can know what's going on. I don't want to be on camera. We don't want to do that. I just want to take care of my son. And I'm having to do these things because you, Ann Kitchen, have not met with us. It is unreasonable and oppressive. The city has put the cart before the horse. The city has zero experience in operating a housing-first shelter and has not identified or selected a management company for such services. As such, the city cannot appropriately forecast the ongoing cost of operating the shelter, nor the scope of trouble that typically comes with a homeless shelter, especially one of that size. This proposed location is in a residential neighborhood. Over 3,000 people live within a half-mile radius, and over 23,000 people live within a mile radius. The proposed location is within walking distance, about a half a mile less if you cut through the parking lot of an elementary school. This largely is an experiment. It is the first time the city is tackling this issue in this way. It should be expected that this will come with some unforeseen problems, and that that's okay. And that's okay. It comes with the territory of dealing with this issue without much experience. The overall issue rears its head when you take numbers one and two listed above together. It is the unforeseen problems and how these problems may affect the neighboring communities. This is why originally a non-residential area was to be selected. Was that five minutes?
You had time that was donated, but I didn't have, Mary Monday? Was Mary Monday here? She wasn't here.
She was here earlier when we-
She was here earlier, when we were all here earlier, when we-
I'm sorry. She needs to be here to speak.
So if you don't mind, I have, let me give you the count.
What? Why don't you come down to the clerk? Go ahead, you have two more minutes.
I just need one more minute. And if you can, you can have your minute back.
He's opting to speak now instead of that.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
A residential neighborhood selected within a quarter-mile radius, there was 1,391 people and 899 residences. With a half-a-mile radius, there are 6,995 people and 3,341 residents. Lastly, within one-mile radius, there are 23,020 people and 11,000 residences. Beyond being overly expensive and residential, it's a parking lot. This parking lot has direct access to the adjacent parking lots. You can easily access the building from Bannister. I did it yesterday by car. To think there won't be spillover is wishful thinking and borderline ignorant. We need to understand that so much of this is speculation. The timeline is a speculation, the ongoing cost is a speculation, and all resulting overspill effects are speculations. We can speculate all day, but please understand that for almost 7,000 people within a half-mile radius, or 23,000 people within a mile radius of the soon-to-be shelter center hub, speculation doesn't cut it. This, again, is why this location was originally set for a non-residential area. Now, I have 187 letters and comments. I made a petition on a Sunday night, 11:30. I have a five-year-old child. My husband has been taking care of my little boy, and he works a full-time job as a director. We're trying to do all this in three days. I have, we have almost 3,000 signatures in here, and I'll put it in. I want you guys to read them and commit to reading the stuff. I'm sending, I'm giving it to your clerk, and I'm done.
Thank you. Is Christine Laguna here? Why don't you come on down, and you'll be next. Go ahead. This is Hallie Nuth.
Hello. Thank you for your time, Mayor and City Council. I do want to preface this. My husband probably doesn't even want me saying this, but my husband was homeless, so I just wanted to put that out there first. My name is Hallie, and I'm a small businesswoman and mother in Southwood. I've been living in Austin since I attended the University of Texas in 2006. My children and I live very close to this proposed shelter location, less than a mile, and we oppose the site. I've lived in South Austin for 10 years, and I've watched our once-quiet, safe, and clean streets and underpasses become littered with trash, human feces, crime, biohazards, and drug dealers. My children have witnessed things so graphic it would make most people shudder. They have seen men expose their genitals, men defecate on the sidewalk while going to school. They've witnessed sex happening in broad daylight, bloody fights, assaults, drunken high individuals passed out, men knocking on their windows at the stoplights, and intoxicated people dart dangerously in front of our car. And this is just every day. Our streets weren't like this when we moved here to start our family. I once used to actually walk under Ben White with a stroller with my newborn to shop. We'd shop freely without concerns of stepping on needles, or being assaulted, or witnessing a violent crime like the murder that has already been mentioned and that happened between two homeless men at Red and Manchak, or also the violent rape that happened too. And also, as a sexual assault survivor, I'm scared, just plain out. So I'm speaking on behalf of my children, the future of Austin, and our most vulnerable in the city. We want them to be children, to ride their bikes, enjoy the park. By the way, my children are here, and I had more children this morning, and of course, they couldn't stay all day, but my children are here. They want to play in their front yards without fear. We know our city is growing rapidly, and the homeless population is only increasing as well, but what I'm asking is to find another location for the shelter, a location not near our most vulnerable and defenseless, our children, a location not near four AISD elementary schools or daycares, or without, within walking distance. All these schools are like literally within walking distance. Or near the elderly who are in the blue-collar neighborhoods that flank either side of this proposed spot. And before we get more of the city's homeless and drug addicts in South Austin, why not clean our streets first and not let the drug dealers and addicts litter and camp and wreak havoc our once-clean neighborhood? We were reassured by council that this shelter location would not be directly adjacent to existing residential neighborhoods. Otherwise, there would be need for our consent. We do not give consent. This location was officially revealed, like we've mentioned, on Friday night, June 14th, and the council is to vote today. There is less than a week for residents and renters, families, and schools to be notified. I believe the proposed site should be far away from homes or schools and children like it was previously stated to be. Please don't experiment in South Austin. Our children matter too, and they also deserve a safe and clean neighborhood. Having this shelter here coupled with the changing ordinances to allow camping will not be helpful in ending homelessness, but it will invite more crime and assaults and theft and drug exposure to our children.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
After Ms. Laguna speaks, is Johnny Cuccia here? Okay. What about LeAnn Starkley? Claudia Cuccia? You come on down, Claudia Cuccia, you'll be up next. Laguna.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of the purchase of the building located at 1112 West Ben White Boulevard to develop a housing-focused shelter. I'm Dr. Chris Laguna, and I'm the Practice Administrator over Housing and Homeless Services at Integral Care. For those of you who may not be familiar with us, Integral Care has been working to support adults and children living with mental health issues, substance use issues, and intellectual and developmental disabilities for over 50 years. For over 20 of those years, we've been working in homeless services. We believe that housing is a healthcare intervention. Housing is the foundation for recovery from homelessness, from mental health issues, and from substance use disorder. It's hard to expect anybody to recover if they don't have a safe and stable place to be. We have teams of over 100 people that are working out in the community every single day, working to connect individuals living on the streets to support services and help that they need. We're also helping over 500 people that are in housing maintain their housing throughout our community. Integral Care supports the purchase of the building to create a housing-focused shelter, and we applaud the city for its leadership in making effective solutions to end homelessness a priority. As we know, shelter can be an important step on the path to moving an individual from homelessness into housing. As I mentioned, it's critical for individuals to have a safe and stable place to wait for their housing. But we know that shelter alone is not sufficient. Connection to services and connection to permanent housing are essential in order to make a positive long-term impact. Providing shelter linked to housing with support addresses the humanitarian crisis of homelessness while also impacting cost across many publicly-supported systems by reducing first responder time, emergency room visits, hospitalizations, crisis services, and incarceration. Our team looks forward to continuing to work with the City of Austin to strengthen how our community addresses the needs of individuals experiencing homelessness. We are committed to helping individuals move from homelessness to house so that they may begin their recovery journey from mental illness, addiction, and other chronic conditions. Together, we can make our community stronger. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Michael Crowe here? Michael Crowe? You'll be at the next podium in just a moment. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Claudia Cuccia. I'm a victim of the junkies and drug addicts and alcoholics that live under the bridge. Ms. Kitchens, as you are aware, I have spoken with you when I was attacked. I was rescued by four police cars. They threatened to kill me. When the police arrived, they wouldn't arrest anybody because the other homeless people said I was mistaken when I identified who it was. However, I was forced to produce an ID so they could find out where I lived. Ms. Kitchens called me. I went down to speak with the Chief of Police. They told me that the City Council has a hands-off policy. How about that? And I believe them because the police have told me over and over again, don't arrest them. Two weeks ago, after that experience, I had a man show me his penis. I pulled over, had my husband pull over, and we followed him, called the police, and when the police got there, they had to call down to the police station to find out if they could be arrested. Hey, there's a woman here, she's really angry. She wants him arrested. What are we supposed to do? The next day, that man, that pervert, was under the bridge a half a mile from where I live. You know, you talk about you wanted to spend $8.6 million for 100 beds. You can't even do anything. You think I believe you're going to make our community safe when I, I don't believe you. I've experienced it. These people know where I live. Every day, I have to go through these junkies and alcoholics to go to the grocery store. My husband has asked me, please, please don't shop or walk. I was coming from my dentist's office at Pax Saddle in Ben White, and I got stopped at the stoplight. A woman on a bench who is obviously delusional and ill, and these are the kind of people I have a great heart for, started screaming at me to get off her street corner, and she came after me. I had to call 911. 911 operator says, tell her to back away, to leave you alone. You're on the phone with the police, well, you know, that does not work with somebody who's not all there, who's hearing voices. Those are the kind of people you leave in our neighborhood. Nobody wants to arrest them. They say, well, the judges let him go, and City Council says, don't be mean to those people, but can't afford to pay the fines while they shoot up in front of me, expose themselves. It's not fair that we have to live that way. I built my home, I moved here a year ago, and I have to go toward government of that every single day, and I'm scared. The policeman came out to do an assessment of my house to make sure that I was safe because those people are on that street corner. I have a convertible, and I'm afraid to drive it because I'm afraid what they'll do to me. They come, they're aggressive when they panhandle, they beat on your windows and kick your car, and if you don't give them money, you hear the foulest of language, which I'm sure we're not allowed to use in this place. And we go through that. You guys don't do that. You guys don't have to tolerate. There's a man with a couch under there. I stopped by and asked him. His name is Jerry. I said, Jerry, why do you limit the bridge like this? It's not healthy. He said, I'm an alcoholic. I have a house down the street, and my wife put me out, but I don't want to quit drinking or give up my problems. Anyway, I'm not for this, this center. You can't even take care of the people that are already there, and you want to bring more in.
Thank you, thank you.
And $8.6 million is ridiculous amount of money.
Is LeAnn Starky here? Is LeAnn Starky here? No? Not LeAnn Starky. What about Kim Von Zermelin? Why don't you come on down? You'll be speaking after Michael Crowe. Mr. Crowe, you have three minutes.
Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. I want to start by telling you self, I was actually homeless 10 and 1/2 years ago, waiting on my disability because I went blind, me and my now ex-wife. I received no help from the city, no help from the state in getting off the street. I got help from a church. About a month ago, I was assaulted on Manchak and Ben White while I was on a bus by one of the people getting off at Sunrise Church. You are mistaken in thinking that you can warehouse 50 to 100 people overnight and then let them out at 5, 6 o'clock in the morning to basically just camp all day, drink, and do hard drugs in the neighborhood. It would be more useful and ultimately more successful to help the homeless community if you would limit the number to maybe 20, 25 people and target the homeless who want the help. The working homeless, the people like me who are temporarily or peripheral homeless because of situations beyond our control, not to be wasting all the resources on the junkies and drunks who do not want to get off the streets. And that is the issue. You are proposing a process in this facility that will ultimately fail, and in three years, you're going to move the arch from downtown to out there so you can develop hotels and high-end shopping to promote tourism. And you know, I'm trying to be calm about this, especially after being disabled and assaulted because I was disabled, which, by the way, is a federal hate crime, but this is Texas. What do you expect? The thing is, is that you need to concentrate on helping the people who want the help, who need your resources to get off of the streets because they do not want to live like this, not wasting your money on the people who are just going to sit there, do drugs all day at the bus stops, use hard drugs, harass people at the bus stops. When I'm waiting on the bus, I constantly am told, you need to move on, go into the next stop. This is my intersection. I'm just trying to catch the bus to go to work or come home from work. And you know what? I'm going to cut my time here because I know there's a lot of other people that want to speak, and I just want to thank you for letting me rant a little bit about this, and hopefully this will have some impact on your decision to actually help the homeless who want the help and not waste everybody's tax dollars and resources on the junkies and drunks who do not want the help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Carl Pearson here? Carl Pearson? Mr. Pearson, I think you have some time donated to you. Ingrid Morton? Is Ingrid Morton here? And is Jean Wilkins here? Okay. So you'll have seven minutes when you come up. Would you like, go ahead.
My name is Kim Von Zermelin. I'm a teacher, and I advocate and work down under the bridge with the homeless. Thank you for being here and for hearing us today. I'm here to protest the idea of the facility at the corner of Ben White and Bannister. I've lived in Austin my whole life. I've never seen anything like what's happening in Austin. Our homeless need help, no doubt. The last three years have been tough. The homeless crisis threatens to destroy our beautiful city. It is a total cry for help. We can do better than a 100-bed facility that rotates its residents to God only know where every six months. We need to really slow down and do this right. Please don't experiment on our working-class neighborhood. The downtown arch gives us great reason to be nervous. We already are having problems, and it feels like you're deciding without our input, and it makes it worse. We have trash everywhere. I counted 25 stolen shopping carts yesterday within a one-mile radius. The manager at Randalls told me he's lost $30,000 in revenue due to shopping cart theft. Council seems not to realize that we're a neighborhood. We thought you weren't going to put it near a neighborhood. We're a neighborhood. I can, I can tell from my time here that the council moves at a very fast pace. No doubt, you have a lot to do. I live four blocks from the posted site. I've worked on my house for 10 years. I was hoping to encourage the council to slow down and look with a vision, to steward our beautiful city forward. The homeless need our help, and the taxpayers need to be heard. We hate the trash, the filth, the crime. Let's protect this beautiful city. As step one to a larger vision, I would like to propose that the city spend the $8 million on some state-of-the-art legal campsites around the perimeter of the city with showers and bathrooms and covered camping.
It's really hard, it's really hard to hear, but it's really hard to hear what she's saying. Out of respect for her, if people could just let her talk and let the other speakers talk, I think that would be best. Please, thank you. Go ahead.
I've proposed that they would have bathrooms, showering facilities, covered camping, a police presence, a laundry mat, free bus passes to and from. Churches from all over the city would pour out and help. We can do better for more people now. Get a vision for permanent housing with onsite services down the line. Do not despise small beginnings. Let's not go the way of LA or Seattle. May I have a little extra time since you had to stop me?
Yes, I'll let you, the-
Please, let's not go the way of Seattle. Let's protect our laws. Let's do our laws. Let's look for a long-term solution. We could have 10,000 people here in the next 10 years. Respectfully, we are Austin. We can be the envy of the nation. Slow down.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, you have seven minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Carl Pearson. I live at 3204 Cupid Drive in the Bartonview neighborhood. I've been there for a little over 20 years. I would also like to thank Councilmember Kitchen for, she came to our neighborhood just before Easter with some members from APD and some of the homeless community representatives, and we had a very nice little talk at a nursing home in our neighborhood. I am in favor of this proposition. I think a lot of the problem that's going on is due to fear. There's fear that it will bring more homeless people here. I used to joke that every homeless guy in the neighborhood lives behind my house because I back up to the shitty path track. A lot of them are not in the woods now, they're under the overpass. I fear that a fire might start one day. The woods behind my house are- The woods behind my house are about the most dangerous in Austin, as far as fire damage. The APD has shown us that if a fire starts back there, we might as well kiss our neighborhood goodbye. So though it is very unsightly, I would much rather the homeless people not be in the woods. I don't also think that having this project here will add significantly to the number of homeless people that are in South Austin, and there are quite a few. We've already got a community, there's a Foundation Resources building right next door. It's an apartment building for at-risk folks and folks that have mental issues and whatnot. There's Life Works right up the street. There's Lone Star Circle of Care is on Bannister right across the street. These people that are along the highway, they're already there. Just because we have another 100 beds is not going to make a huge influx of these folks. And as far as it becoming another arch, that's just not going to happen. It's not going to be like the arch. You can't just stay there all day long, waiting for a bed. So I don't really see what the problem is going to be with having this. Sure, it costs some money. We bought for 85 about 20 years ago. We could sell for five or six now. Pricing, housing goes up. That's, you know, that's the way it is in Austin. Things are just going crazy with prices. And I don't want to take up the whole seven minutes. I just want to say that I and many of my neighbors are in support of this proposition. And also, I know many of the neighbors in Southwood, which by the way is not exactly directly adjacent, it is true, there, you can get through a driveway through Bannister. I would easily consider you guys building some fencing on the back end of this property if this does go through. It's not easy to get to the railroad tracks, and even if you are in the railroad tracks, Ben White's way up there. It's not easy to climb up there. I just drove it the other day. That's, you're not going to have people milling about like zombies. It's just not, it's not, it's not right. Anyway, I thank you for your time, and I do hope that this proposition succeeds.
Okay, thank you. Is Ann Clary here? Okay, why don't you come on up? And then I had Chris Harris speaking next. Just walked up on telephone. Is, is, is Josiah Stevenson here? Josiah Stevenson? You'll be up next. You're the last speaker against this to speak with, first speak for three minutes, and then other speakers will speak for a minute after that. You're the 10th speaker. So why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. My name is Ann Clary, and I'm a native South Austinite, a homeowner, a taxpayer, and a mother. I live on Sylvandale in District 5. There has been little thought and transparency given to the impact this facility will have on the surrounding neighborhoods by Mayor Adler and this council. My understanding is that this proposed facility is not intended for the type of homeless person strewn along Ben White who is visibly suffering from mental health and addiction issues. We already have several foundation communities' properties in District 5 that provide the transitional housing services you're describing for the Ben White property. And we still have a growing homeless population along Ben White. We do not need another facility like this in the area. What we need is for our mayor and our council to act now on the homeless living and dying along Ben White. I've seen limp bodies removed by paramedics from under the overpass at Ben White and Manchak. I've seen two homeless people engaging in anal intercourse in broad daylight under the overpass at Ben White and Manchak. My twins, James and Rosie, also saw these things. There are three. Ben White has become a human wasteland, and it's terrible what is happening to the homeless people there. Do something about that, and not with another arch shelter, because it's very visible, arch is not working, and be transparent and connect with your constituents on this issue. Do not pay now and plan later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stevenson, you want to come up? And then after Mr. Stevenson, is Patricia Rayburn here? You'll be up next. Go ahead. And then Chris Harris, if someone needs to go get him if he's going to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You have three minutes.
Josiah Stevenson. I live in District 9, speaking for myself today. I'm here to support this resolution and this shelter. It's clear, looking around the city, that we are not, right now, doing enough to address the homelessness epidemic that is affecting so many people in our city, both people experiencing homelessness in our city and others. It's unfortunate that when we propose even something that, you know, is not, might not be a comprehensive solution, or might not be, when we propose one step in the right direction, or one thing to tackle part of the problem, that we get distracted by the idea that maybe this doesn't solve everything in one fell swoop. This is one of many things that we need. We need more shelter spaces, one of many things that we need, in a variety of parts of the city, in a variety of neighborhoods, in a variety of residential neighborhoods, including my own. And, yeah, we need more shelters, more investment, and we need to turn away from some of the things that we've been trying to do on this issue that don't work, like criminalization of harmless activities. I know that's a topic for later, but we need to stop wasting resources on things like that and start spending resources on housing people and offering services. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, you have one minute. Mr. Harris, you want to come down? You're the last speaker to have three minutes on this side. You have one minute.
Oh, one minute?
That's correct.
So hello, I'm Patricia Rayburn, and I live 3114 South Congress. Councilmember Kitchens, would you please look at me and pay attention to what I'm saying? Because you represent me. I would appreciate that very greatly. As everyone here, we very much want to take care of our homeless community and resolve this issue. I differ in the approach that we are proceeding with. First of all, it's not economical to do this. You're talking about 8.6 million to purchase the property that's zoned light office. You can't do the use there. So let me see, the Land Use Development Code, which you should have looked at before you even started this, 25.2.6B-45 for transitional housing, is not allowable at that site. Again, 25.2.491, transitional, is not allowable at that site as well.
Thank you. You can finish your thought.
My thought is, we can do a much better process here from great examples on how to take care of our homeless communities. Community First is a beautiful example. It's underbuilt, you could take that 8.6 million, and you can build, we can really take care of our homeless there.
Thank you very much.
Please, please consider that.
Mr. Harris, you have three minutes. On deck is Eddie Salazar. Is Eddie Salazar here? You'll be up at this podium.
Yeah, hi. My name is, my name is Chris Harris. I'm in District 1. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this opportunity. I want to speak in favor of this item. It's never the right time. It's never the right place. It's never the right cost. It's never exactly right, the way to deal with people experiencing extreme poverty and homelessness in our community. That's not a reason not to act. We have to act. Shelter through every single part of this city is a vital necessity moving forward in order to deal with the growing issue of homelessness, which is a byproduct of inequality first and foremost in our community. That's not fully a city problem, but it starts here. And so we have to, we have to take actions like this. I want to thank you, Councilmember Kitchen, for your bravery in sponsoring this item and putting this forward. These are the types of things that we need in each and every one of your districts. And so I implore you to move forward with this item and to continue to build shelter throughout this community as a first step to helping folks get off of the street and into our communities as, as working members that, that we can all live with. And, and, and we can't arrest our way out of this problem. We can't move people out of the city. These are people. They will be here, they are part of our community. Thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you. Is Eddie, is Shay Petrichik here? Shay Petrichik? What about Connor McLaughlin? You'll be up at this podium. Go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you. My name is Eddie Salazar, and I am a big believer in helping those in need. However, as many have mentioned, this proposed homeless shelter is now meant to be established in the middle of a residential area. What's worse, we're all taken completely by surprise with what the city plans to do and where it plans to do it. We don't know if the city will truly keep our neighborhood safe. You can't guarantee that the homeless will be at the shelter and not shooting up drugs, urinating on sidewalks, throwing beer bottles on our front lawns, all of which I have experienced myself. You can't guarantee that the homeless will stay at the shelters and then go away peacefully when their time is up. The only thing that I know is, that I know is a guarantee is what I see in here today, not tomorrow. And today, some of the solutions the city has found, like the one in Sixth Street, for example, have only hurt our neighborhoods. Please reconsider where you place a homeless shelter. That's it will affect thousands and thousands of families within a half a mile radius. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Carmen Semilpa Hernandez here? Why don't you come on down? Sir, introduce yourself, you have one minute.
Yep, I'm Connor McLaughlin. Our homes, our schools, our safety, I feel that Kitchen is asleep at the wheel. She's trying to yet again institutionalize the homeless. The homeless aren't helpless. These are people just like us. A lot of Americans are facing homelessness. They're only a paycheck away of losing their homes. Institutionalizing people and treating them like cattle and recycling them through the system and having the taxpayers pay for a failing system yet again is only setting the homeless up for failure. I think that Community First has initiative that works. It's spiritually based. It's, it's community-driven. There's a mentorship. These people aren't being thrown by the wayside like Austin City Hall has been doing for decades. You know, I'm assuming y'all have heard of Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs. You're not addressing those by opening up another failing arc.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is Johnny Cuccia here? Why don't you come on down? Go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm a lifelong South Austinite, voting citizen in District 3, and a mother to four kids who graduated or still attending AID schools. I, I'm sorry. I currently have a six-year-old at Galindo, which is less than half a mile from this site. Our campus is in direct path from the proposed site to South First, heading to downtown. It will continue to be a shortcut used by many people on foot. Most of my family and neighbors disagree with the tolerance and empathy that I have for the homeless community in our area and for the shelters in our area, including the shelter that currently shares a property line with Galindo Elementary. I tolerate, I tolerate the aggressive panhandling, the blocked walkways by loitering individuals at my local Walmart on Ben White and other Ben White businesses I frequent. I'm a volunteer, I'm at the Galindo campus frequently because I volunteer with my kids. We see a lot of what has been given as examples, and I tolerate that. I'm an adult, I, I choose that, but my children should not, I cannot ask my children to tolerate this while they're at school.
Thank you very much. Is Jeff Hodges here? Sir, Mr. Cuccia? Go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Johnny Cuccia. I live at 3903 Clausen Road. You've heard from a lot of people, and I had a lot of the same things, but I'll try not to repeat some of those. Even though we all care about the homeless problem, we care about the homeless people, we also care about our community. At this proposed location for this building, there are three elementary schools within, I don't know, half a mile. Our neighborhoods are very close by. We have a lot of people that live in the area, and we're worried about safety. If you saw the amount of crime, theft, bicycles, everything going down the road, people getting their cars broken in, a lot of these things don't get reported because the police say, you're fighting an uphill battle. We'll do what we can, but we can't promise you anything. In my opinion, there's got to be a better way. This way is way too slow. You buy this building for 8 million, you have to repurpose it, you have to, cost of operation. There is a better way. I encourage you to think outside the box. Instead of this, it will take years for this to be effective. And only for a small number of beds.
Thank you. After Mr. Hodges speaks, we're then going to have Sabrina Oberg, Oberg come up? Is Sabrina Oberg here? Why don't you come up to this podium? Go ahead, sir, you have one minute.
My name is Jeff Hodges. I have not had the opportunity to speak here, but I have watched my uncle Brian Rogers speak here many times. I live about three blocks from the proposed shelter. My son attends Jocelyn Elementary, where we find syringes, bloody syringes on campus. We deal with it. It's an uphill battle. We fight it every day. I've met with Councilwoman Kitchen, Sergeant Townsend, and many other leaders from our community. The situation is so dire that we no longer ride our bikes to school. I'm here to ask you to please take a step back and look at what you were about to do to our neighborhood. Sunrise Church is a perfect example of how magnetic their services can, are at attracting huge numbers of transients and addicts. If your council, if you, the council don't reconsider this decision, you will be responsible for ruining my home, my son's safety, and the same goes for my neighbors. As taxpaying citizens of this great city, we deserve the right to have a say in what changes take place in our neighborhood and the effects that on our safety, our family, and the value of our properties. There are better locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Simon Kohn here? No? Simon Kohn? Why don't you come on down? Go ahead, you have one minute. Introduce yourself, please.
My message is for Ann Kitchens, and I want to request that you investigate my last eviction at 1301 West Ben White, which is totally illegal, involving that casino. You can't have Section 8 near that casino nights, and I want to tell you something why you cannot have this shelter over there. Last year, there were three fires in my named block, electrical. We don't have enough power to power up that hill, as Perry told you 10 years ago, when I was working the elections then. We don't have enough power. Now, as far as the homeless, I'm a great recession survivor. My homeless number is five years, 11 months. Native born, born and raised. My daughter just came home last month. Her number is six years, four months. I think we need to have an assessment of the children and of the bodies that are being dumped in Metropolis, PO. We're seeing them, and there is blood everywhere. As a missionary for Agape, ATX, SOCO, if you put the shelter in, put it wholeheartedly. But I say, put it at DPS. We trump the city and state, DPS was the perfect location for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Robin Dexter here? Robin Dexter?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you'll be at this podium.
I have coffee, so I'll be out.
Okay, you'll be up next. One minute, go ahead.
My name's Samine Cohen. I'm from District 3 and a native Austinite. Not a lot about this plan aligns with your action plan to end homelessness. The original action plan noted that emergency shelters should be smaller, assuming than the current size of the arch emergency shelter, and distributed throughout the city. This new proposed location does not achieve that very basic directive. The original plan also noted that emergency shelters should not be located next to schools, yet it's less than a quarter mile from an elementary and my son's preschool. Most importantly, the research shows, and the action plan notes, the success and importance of housing subsidies and vouchers to support rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing as the best solution to reduce long-term homelessness. This proposed $10 million between the property renovation and management does nothing to address that issue. In fact, there are many initial steps prior to the emergency shelters. This process has completely skipped. If they have been added, we haven't been notified because we haven't been involved in this process. Last year, for one week, you opened the Housing Authority waitlist. With over 20,000 expected people to sign up, where is the help for those people who are already on that waitlist? How can that $10 million go to support them? I urge you to meet those prerequisites before you put any housing shelter and more taxpayer dollars into hard cash outlays in this principle.
Is Mark Lippincott here?
Robin Dexter is ready.
Hold on just one moment, you'll be up next. You'll speak in just one moment.
Oh, yes, sir.
Hold on. Is Mark Lippincott here? Why don't you come on down, you'll be at this podium. You have one minute.
Yes, sir. The plan for a 50 or 100-person shelter is like putting a Band-Aid on a sharpback. The plan for a 50 or 100-person shelter is like putting a Band-Aid on a shark bite, letting the meat rot and get maggots. If you go to a hospital from a shark bite, they do amputation. We need to amputate, have amputation of homelessness in Austin. My, I have a picture of it. What we need is a large property fenced on each side, put some cement out, and big metal buildings, have open showers, and porta-potties all along the back and sides, then have a kitchen where, have the porta-potties along the back where there's an alley where the trucks can come and empty the porta-potties. We can have tent city. We can have an area for records. This is the hardest thing. When people are homeless, they don't have anywhere to keep their records.
Okay.
Okay?
Ms. Dexter, thank you. Thank you very much.
Can you, can you find a place that has like 14 acres, not 1.6 acres? Not for 100 people, but for at least 4,000 people? This picture right here, I have.
And thank you for this.
Can be done in two months, and we can have the homeless with roof over their head in two months. Hire people from the area.
Ms. Dexter, thank you very much.
Putting money into Austin and hire people to help these people.
Let me give somebody else a chance to talk to. After Mr. Lippincott.
Anybody want a copy of this?
Is Ann Clary here? Ann Clary? No, I already spoke, that's right. Mario Cantu? Mario Cantu here? What about Clem Hollingsworth?
Right here.
All right, you'll be up next. Mr. Lippincott, you have one minute.
Thank you, Council. My name is Mark Lippincott, and we've heard from a lot of residents, but my office is actually in this office park where this is being located. You see, talking about it as a 1.6 acre tract, but really it's part of a three office park. There's three offices there. Mine is, my office is in one of those offices. We share a driveway. I'm going to be parking in the same parking lot. This is not some separate facility. I've already lost subtenant, potential subtenant that was going to pay me $4,000 a month because of the, because of the fact that this was announced. We were negotiating it, we were about to lease, and it went away. That's, it's frustrating to see, I live in District 8, but I work in District 5. It's frustrating to me as a business owner and as someone who has invested in it. When you talk about restricted covenants, we have one, it's called zoning. And this particular property is owned office. That's why I have put my office there, and now it's going to be a residential facility of unknown quality and quantity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is Emily Steinbauer here? Emily Steinbauer? No?
Yes, I'm here.
You'll be at this podium. Go ahead, sir, you have one minute.
How you doing? My name is Clem Hollingsworth. I am living, I am homeless. I'm living right across the street from the Arch. We have no water or no way to use the restroom. You know, there's sex offenders. We don't want to register as a sex offender. I'm not a sex offender. So, how hard is it to put a restroom and to put a water fountain so everybody, so we can save our tax dollars? People are dehydrated. They have a whole mountain of water in the Arch that they don't give people. We need water. Those people are dying, dehydrated, because we have a heat advisory. We don't have no water. They got a gallon, a whole mountain of water in the Arch that they will not give nobody. We need water and restrooms downtown. That's all we need, water and restrooms, and people that's going to walk around and show people that we have resources. People don't know resources if you don't tell them. You got to tell people that there are resources. That's all I got to say, support.
Yes.
Mr., sir, I think it's Mr. Clements, is that right? I just wanted to let you know that on the August 7th agenda, my, thanks to some of the feedback that we've gotten and some of the ideas we've gotten, my office is, has prepared an item for consideration on the first meeting in August to move forward with an initiative to get water fountains downtown.
It was so hard to use the restroom. I was like, where am I going to go to use the restroom? I got to go right now, this morning, and there's a parking lot. The Arch won't let me in because they profiled me because a guy chased me with a lock.
Yeah.
We don't have nowhere to use the restroom. That's why it's feces. That is unsanitary. You got kids walking and poop and pee in the alley.
Completely agree.
But we wasting our water. We need the water to hydrate. It's not the waste just to put it back down and drain. It's poop smell like that in the alleys.
Right, sir, thank you.
Have people to volunteer to clean our city. What about people that's volunteer to clean? I clean every day in front of the Arch. That's why it's not trash in the street.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate, I appreciate the feedback and chair.
God bless y'all. Stay hydrated. Water is everywhere.
Thank you. Is Mr. Cantu here? Mario Cantu? Go ahead.
My name is Emily Steinbauer. I live at 1326 Morgan Lane. That's about 200 yards from the proposed location. I just heard about this two days ago, so I haven't had time to prepare. I got off work today and came down this morning at 10:00 AM. I don't have anything formal to say, other than that I'm a single female. I no longer can jog in my own neighborhood. I don't feel safe. I'm heckled every time I go to Randall's, to the gas station. And this proposed location, I think, will just exacerbate the problem. I keep asking myself, when is the city going to step in and do something about this? Help me to feel safe in my own home, in my own neighborhood, and I think that this is going to do the exact opposite. I'm a taxpayer. I, I'm following the rules. I would just ask you to reconsider and to ask you to put yourselves in my shoes. If this was your own backyard, if this was your own home and your own family, how would you vote? I think you know the answer, and I would act you to, ask you to act on your conscience and make the right decision. Thank you.
By my records, I think Mr. Cantu is the last speaker that signed up to speak. If you signed up to speak and I didn't call on you, come on down to the clerk. Mr. Cantu, you have one minute.
Thank you. I'm glad I'm actually the last speaker to speak, because I was able to hear a lot of the stories that are impacting the city of Austin. What really stuck out to me is that, how individuals are being treated. You know, we talk about, as far as council members, about mobility a lot, buses, using buses, riding bikes. But some of the stories I just heard just a while ago, people can't do that. They can't ride their bikes. They can't stroll their kids in areas to go to the grocery store, to Randall's. They can't do it in their neighborhood. People almost get raped, getting stabbed, drug abuse, on and on and on. And I think, you know, there's one aspect of this. You know, we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, six females on city council. And when I heard a lot about what some of the females that live in this, in these residential areas, is very important to me, because I see what some of the things that are happening to them as, as individuals, and I ask you to please recognize that in number two. Also, one, one big missing link is the children. Think about what children see when they're riding these vehicles and they see these individuals doing it. Is it okay with you, or is it okay with them? Neither. So, please do something. Thank you.
Is all the speakers we have? We're back up to the dais, Councilmember Kitchen.
There, there's a number of things I'd like to speak to, so basically that fall into two categories.
Go ahead.
Okay. First off, I, I do, I do want to, I do want to thank everyone that is, that came down today, and I want to speak to, to one thing that I believe that everyone is saying, whether you're for a shelter or not. I hear everyone talking about the concerns that we all have for the South Austin area, and it's not just in South Austin, it's in other parts of the city now. We are way past time to really come to grips with the issues in our community around homelessness. We have concerns about, about people having a place to live and to be clean and safe. We have concerns ourselves in our neighborhoods about feeling safe. These are all very, very real, and I really appreciate, I really appreciate the urgency and the passion with which you are speaking to us. And I hear that. We have got to take action. So, one thing I want to talk about is I'm looking forward to the discussion in a little bit this evening that we will have about camping. Many, much of what you were talking about is the just horrific situation that we're seeing in terms of people living under bridges and in green belts with no place to go to the bathroom, no place to be clean, no place to store their, their items, and all the, all the things that you all are experiencing from your public safety concerns, concerns about addiction, concerns about other things that are going on on the streets. So, we have to address that. We have two items coming up to us in the evening that I look forward to working with my colleagues on that will take head-on the issue of camping. So, we need to make changes to the camping ordinance that we have right now. It's obviously, obviously not working. So, I thank the mayor for the item he's brought up, and we'll have more conversations about that, and that one speaks to much of the recommendations that you all, you all have made about coming to grips with the issues around camping. We also have ordinance that Councilmember Cassar has brought forward and others that comes to grips with the fact that our current camping ordinance by, by criminalizing people that are not committing crimes doesn't, doesn't address the problem either. So, I want to speak to that, because I recognize and I understand and I support the concerns you are raising, and I think you'll see this council take action on those. I want to talk to, about the, the shelter right now and about the, my, the direction that I've passed out on the dais related to the legal restrictions. A couple of things I need to say. I think, I, I think people are concerned, or this is what I'm hearing, that people are concerned that a housing-focused shelter will make the problem worse. And I understand that concern. I think there are things that, that we must do to make sure that that doesn't happen, and I think we can, and I think we must, because letting the situation stay the way it is, letting, just letting people continue to live in a place where they're not safe or healthy is not humane for them. It is not getting, is not progress. So, so the house, I understand.
Hey, 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 please, please.
I understand that you don't trust the city, because you haven't seen any change. Shall I go ahead? Okay, so let me just say a couple of things. A housing-focused shelter is not a camp. It's not a camp under a, an overpass. It is not what the Arch has been in the past, and I, I want to say, I want to thank the people at the Arch that are working on improvements there. It is not that. It is not a Sunrise drop-in center, and I want to thank the folks at Sunrise that do the work that they can do. What this is, is this is a place for people to live. It is a, no, that is not correct. Okay, let me.
Excuse me.
If you want to stay, you have to listen to the people talk.
You've had a chance to speak. It is now time for people to speak from the dais.
So, I want to.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. So, the, the information I'd like to share is that a housing-focused shelter is a place that's secure, welcoming, place for people to live while they're being connected to services. They, it's not, it's not a drop-in center. It's not a place where people come and go. It's not a place where people stay for a certain amount of time and then they're back out on the streets. That's not what a housing-focused shelter is. It is a place where people are referred by case managers and the, that have assessed them and say that they're ready to come to this place. They get services to help them find more permanent housing. They go on from this place to more permanent housing off the street. The services are geared to allowing self-sufficiency and meeting daily needs. Like I said before, it's not a drop-in center. Individuals that are not staying at the center are not allowed to gather outside. People do not knock on the door and ask for services. People are referred by agencies. There's no drop-in services, there's no intake location. So, but I, I think it's important that all of those things are captured in a legally, in a legally binding instrument, and so I'd like to call my colleagues' attention to the direction that I've passed out. And the direction is that, and I'll, and I'll read it for folks, is that staff shall bring back for council approval an enforceable legal instrument which applies the restrictions necessary to the property and its operation for achieving the purposes of providing housing-focused shelter and services according to best practices and of being a good neighbor. Through consultation with the National Alliance in Homelessness and pub, and public input, which our homeless strategy officer spoke to earlier, and public input over the next 60 days at least, the legal instrument shall establish terms of operational safety and effectiveness, including but not limited to, first, not exceeding 100 beds at the center, second, prohibition of drop-ins, third, provision of day services only being available to individuals who are actually living at the center, fourth, prohibition on camping around the facility. That means, that means enforcing no trespassing. Fifth, measures that, additional measures that secure the property. For example, there's been some discussion of potential for fencing. The last one is any other measures necessary for best practice operations. And so, I would ask my colleagues to support adding that direction to this item.
Is there any further discussion on the dais, on this item? We've called up Item 70, these three things. Hey, 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 if you, we're not, this is not an opportunity for back and forth. You've had a chance to speak. We're now deliberating on the dais. That's how this works. And you're more than welcome to stay and watch if you want to stay and watch. If you don't want to stay and watch, you don't have to. Further discussion from the dais. Mr. Vladeckin?
Do we have his bike on at the corner?
It's got like an error message on the screen. It's not turning on. Okay. You know, for, this issue is not new in the last month or six months, or even six years. And, you know, my colleagues, especially Councilmember Tovo, who have been on the council for a number of years, have done a lot of work to try and address the multiple facets of this challenge. The item that is coming up later even references a long list of resolutions from this council, prior councils, and the councils before 10-1 to try to work on homelessness. Obviously, there's still a problem, because of the things that we've tried to do as a city, we have failed to build new facilities. And, and, you know, a lot of folks referenced community first. And, and what I think we may have forgotten is that there were attempts to build community first within the city of Austin, and this same reaction occurred. So, this is not going to be the only thing we have to do. This will not be the only part of town that has to do it. Every part of town is going to have to do its part. Next week, I'm meeting with churches in my district to talk about doing onsite housing on their properties in District 6. We, we are all going to do our part to address this issue, and, and when you look at communities across the nation, you will find that, that there is not one way to do this, that there is not one solution, but what you also find is that the cities that, that have the biggest problem are the ones who lack courage in this moment. And, and I want to thank Councilmember Kitchen for her courage to be first as we look at a new way to address homelessness in this community, and I am looking forward to supporting this.
Councilmember Retharia?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Ann Kitchen. You know, in my district, District 3, we have MHMR. It's a place where they intake people with mentally challenged problems and, and help them become productive citizens. We have a facility just built. We just went and took a tour. There are going to be over 100 people there that are going to be able to be housed there. And, and it, yes, it's, it's, I would say it's less than 100 yards away from this elementary school there. And... And the people have the same concerns and mention the same things that y'all were mentioning here. But, you know, this place is designed where it is safe. It's helping people to get back on their feet. This is not one of those kind of shelters like the Arch. No, the Salvation Army has a policy. There are just too many of them down there, but their policy is always to put them out on the street at the first thing in the morning and then bring them back in in the afternoon. And that's why you see so many people hanging out there. And that's what our challenge is. We need to, and we need to distribute this. I have a methadone center right in my neighborhood that intake people, young people, and people that are addicted to drugs, you know? And there are a few that hang out there, you know, out in the street, you know? And it's been going on now for about at least 20 years. You know, it's a big, major problem that we're facing here. You know, we're trying to address these homeless people. You know, these people are not from, the ones that we're going to help out are not the ones that are hanging out there underneath the bridge. We wish we could. And that's-- There's a lot of homeless--
Hey, hey, please.
There's a lot of homeless people out there that are from here. I have friends that are homeless, living underneath the bridge. I talk to them daily, daily, and I never had any problem with them, you know? Yes, we're not going to be able to take all of them off because there was over 2,000 people. We're just going to build, we're just trying to help as many people as we can. It's going to take time, and all we're asking you is for your understanding that, you know, I deal with them. I had people that break into my, stole my bike, you know? They're just all over the place. This is not a unique situation, you know? And it's, we need to build all these centers and all over the city, just like my colleague Flanagan said. That's a big need throughout the city because you're never going to solve that problem. You're always going to have to deal with these people. They're living under the bridge. And let me tell you, that's state property. We cannot go underneath that bridge and tell people to move out of there. So that is state property, and if you wanted something done underneath the bridge, I would recommend you go and talk to your state representative.
So I want to say that the kinds of concerns that are raised by the neighborhood, this is not the first time I've heard these concerns. You know, I, probably all of us have gotten thousands of emails from people around the city raising the same kind of concerns. I've had countless number of people come into my office to express these very same concerns. And I've also gone around the city, joined neighbors and walked through camps, walked through neighborhoods, spoken with folks that are experiencing homelessness, both with and without neighbors. The reports of bloody syringes and people exposing themselves to children, people sleeping or blocking streets, and it's not something which is just in this particular neighborhood, although under PAC Saddle at Ben White, it's a considerable problem. It's also not just under I-35 at that slaughter. It is also not just downtown. It is all over the city. And all over the city, people are coming in and saying, "The status quo, whatever it is that you're doing now is not working. You have to do something else." Usually, that's accompanied by saying, "And stop studying this thing and actually start doing something." We don't have to study it anymore because we've already studied this so many times. We know what the answers are. We know what the folks tell us, what the experts tell us to do, and the only question for us is whether or not we have the political will to put the resources against it and the political and community will to actually take the steps. I cannot participate any longer in not acting. I cannot participate any longer in not setting up the structure and the system to fundamentally do something to change the status quo in this city because the status quo on this issue is killing us. I am proud to be part of a city council that has recognized this. We just went through a strategic planning process as a council in the city, and goodness knows, there are lots of things that a lot of people want all over this city. We want more parks. We want better transportation. We want, I mean, the list goes on and on and on. But the number-one thing this council set as the highest priority for us to deal with is the challenge we have with homelessness in our city, the number-one priority. It's about time. And manager, thank you for coming on board and identifying this and saying, "We need one person in this city that wakes up every morning and goes to sleep every night, and this is the only thing that they think about. This is their job." Thank you for pulling back the process for selecting that person so as to elevate it, make it an executive-level position, and paying more money for that. And now that the application period is over, I hope you fill that position posthaste. And I'm encouraged with the indications that we have real good applicants for that position. I'm proud to be part of a council and a community that passed the largest housing bond in the history of the city at a quarter of a billion dollars, part of which is to actually fund doing stuff that is real in this city. Putting with that the $30 million we're going to be able to harvest from the Waller Creek Tiff as we kept room in the park funding so that we could actually earmark money to be spent on homelessness. I'm happy to be part of a city that put eight and a half million dollars in the last budget toward homelessness priorities, moving it from other priorities in the city to this area. I'm proud to be part of a city that has begun to actually take steps. Now, what we're told from the experts is, unfortunately, there's not one step we can do that makes this work, that it's a continuum. There's a series of things that have to happen for this to be able to work. What we have to do is we have to be able to find people that are homeless and move them into a shelter that acts as a triage center so that they can be assessed to determine what it is that they need. Do they need mental health support? Do they need a job? Do they, what kind of doctor do they need? What kind of employment do they need? What do they need? And they need a home. So how do we get them in a home? How does a city do that like ours? What we know is, is that if we don't do these things, if we don't build out the continuum, if we are willing to accept the status quo, that that is the recipe for us ending up like Los Angeles and Seattle and Portland and Oregon. And I refuse to sit by and maintain the status quo and not act and leave us on that path where we end up like those other cities. I want to also compliment Councilmember Kitchen because it is a brave thing to do, to stand up and say, "We're going to take a piece of that continuum. We're going to put some of the hardest pieces, the shelter, we're going to put that somewhere in your district," which also happens to be in my district, too. And we look at each other on the dais. I think we have to make the commitment that every one of us is going to step up and act in the example of Councilmember Kitchen because we're going to locate this kind of thing all over the city because we have to locate it all over the city because we can't let any one of these places get too big because the experts tell us that if we do that, it's not going to work. So every one of us up here is going to have their day like this on the dais in order for us to be able to get done what has to get done in this city. But by God, we have to do it. We have to actually show the resolve to get this done. And when they're in the shelter, we have to provide the resources necessary to provide the home exit strategy so that when somebody goes in that shelter, they get the assessment and that they get the wraparound services that they need, and they get moved into permanent supportive housing. You know, we were successful when we focused on the veterans' population. We did this as a small, almost pilot program, and we got to the place in this community focusing with veterans, homeless veterans on the street, by putting in places for them along that continuum so that they could get into homes. And many of those veterans, many of those veterans are now back out in our community, participating in the community outside of the system, but they are only doing that because we provided the opportunity and the pathway for them to be able to get out of the situation that they were in. We have to put the money and the resources and the political commitment where our words are and get that done because we know from experience in this city, if we focus on a problem, we can in fact deal with it. This is a city that last year got half of the children in our city that were on our streets off the streets in a pilot program that we now need to expand. Now, this is going to be hard for us to do because the legislature just capped our revenue, and they capped our revenue, and if we keep our existing budget, we're $58 million upside down in three years. And in the face of that budget, which says we're going to have to cut existing programs and things that were existing in that budget, we're going to have to rally above that and say, "Not only are we going to do that, but we're also going to make room to deal with this our number-one priority." But we have set this as our number-one priority. There are other things that we're going to be considering the rest of this evening on this issue. They all go together. We have ordinances out on our street that we know are not working. We have ordinances on the street that issued 18,000 tickets between 2014 and 2016, and clearly it did nothing to effectively manage this problem. Our law enforcement people interpreted differently, brought the number of tickets down between 2016 and 2018, and still, it's not the answer. That's not the answer. The other resolution we have tonight is asking the manager to come back here quick in August with telling us, "Okay, if we're going to tell people you can't camp there, where can they camp?" And how do we do that in a way that protects the rest of our city? I look forward to us being able to consider those other resolutions, but even those resolutions are not enough. We hear the Councilmember Tovol is bringing another set of resolutions to us in August when we come back. This has to be our focus. This has to be the ball we don't take our eyes off of. This is the moment and the time to do that. We have a gift in this city right now, and the gift that we have in this city is that we have a community that is generally united in wanting to deal with this problem. We have not gotten to the place in this community where we demonize the people that are homeless because as soon as we treat this like another political battle where we each choose sides on this issue and demonize the people on the other side of the issue and demonize the people who are homeless, we know again what that gets us because all you have to do again is look at Los Angeles and San Francisco and Seattle and Portland today, and that's what you see. We are not there yet. We can't let that worm turn. But I will tell you, if we just maintain the status quo and try to get by on what we're doing now, that will be the very next thing that happens in our community. We have to act. I understand the fears. I hear the fears. And manager, I will say to you that if we have any hope of being able to develop in this city the resources we need, then people need to look back at this location and say, "Okay, it did not develop the way we feared it might." Because if it develops that way, there won't be another one, and this one will get shut down. And we have to do better than that, which means the entire city's eyes are on this project, on this location, on what we're doing to help with the shelter, the Salvation Army. The entire eyes are on what we're doing here, and we have to make it work if we're going to expect to fill out the continuum that we need. I hear the neighborhood. I hear the fears. I know them. I have walked that area on PAC Saddle and Ben White with people in the neighborhood. We have to do the job. We have to treat it as the priority. We are all in this together. It's going to touch all of us. I appreciate this resolution, and I'm going to vote for it.
Further discussion on the dais. Councilmember Kassar.
I don't think I have much to add after the comments from a variety of folks from the dais, except to add that, you know, we hear from so many people on this issue. I hear from my neighbors. I hear from folk experiencing homelessness. I hear from my constituents, not just from District 4, but from across the city, that we need to do something and that folks need somewhere to go. And there is no perfect place for people to go. There is no silver bullet. Addressing homelessness and ending homelessness is hard. Treating addiction is hard. Addressing mental health issues is hard. All of these things, none of these things are easy, but we need places for folks to go, and I appreciate Councilmember Kitchen and the city staff and everyone here working together to find this important place. And I'm going to vote yes on this project and look forward to the conversation about how we get more and more places through the housing bond that should be permanent supportive housing, shelter, navigation centers in every part of the city, including in my own district. And I think that that's the spirit here on the dais, and so that's why I know that this is hard. What we heard today is what I hear on the phone, what we hear talking to people, what I hear in my district. And it's because of that urgency that we hear, that we're acting on this and I think committed to acting moving forward. So thanks again, Councilmember Kitchen, and to everyone working on this.
We have a motion on dais further comment. Councilmember Tovol.
Very briefly, I also just want to thank Councilmember Kitchen for her advocacy on this issue, and this is a very hard discussion, and we have some other hard ones ahead of us. And I want to acknowledge the concerns of those of you who came and shared them today and to let you know that we are, you know, I think everyone across this dais are also very concerned about the situation outside the Arch, the situation in the underpasses in your neighborhood, and as the mayor mentioned, in several, multiple other areas across our city. This has really reached the level of a crisis here in Austin. And so we, you know, I don't want to discount the incidents that you've described and to let you know that we are also concerned about them. As I mentioned, Councilmember Kitchen has been a fierce advocate for more resources to make sure that those areas are safe. And as a council, and I would say this to the city manager, we have needs like that throughout our city, and you're hearing some of those described today. And so I also want to emphasize, though, that these are, the need for housing, the need for services are great, and our community, our private partners and our community need to be, need to assist with this. You understand from the mayor's discussion some of the budget constraints that we're up against, and this is a community-wide crisis. And so, you know, there are multiple ways in which we can all join hands and work together to end homelessness in this community. And, you know, from helping to support the Salvation Army in ending their fundraising goal so that their shelter, which is beautiful and new, can be fully operational, they don't yet have the funding to do that, to assisting with some of the other organizations, I encourage everyone who cares about this issue and is passionate about it to help us with these efforts. But please understand, we hear you on these concerns.
I want to thank all the speakers for coming and sharing your very real concerns. We face such immense challenges on this council. The mayor touched on this, but, you know, in being married to a council member, my husband gets to have exciting conversations about, you know, these issues, and we were talking about all the ways our country has failed, the most vulnerable in our country. And it starts from the very top, and it has fallen on cities to try to find the funding and the way to solve these issues, from our federal government not addressing health care for all. Many of those in our community that are facing homelessness challenges, it's a health care issue, and our federal government hasn't addressed that. Our state government hasn't expanded Medicaid just because, and that could have helped so many people and possibly kept so many people out of a situation that they're in. We haven't addressed mental health at any level the way that we should, and so all of these ways that we have failed has fallen on cities to address. And then to top it off, our state has hamstrung the way that we can bring in revenue. First, saying-- saying that it was a property tax relief and then admitting that it wasn't. It really wasn't about property tax relief. It was purely political. And so now, you know, it's fallen on cities to address these extremely challenging things. I appreciate those of you who came and told very emotional stories. I hear you. I live about two miles from this location. I live about a mile and a half from the Salvation Army location on South Congress. And so I just hope, you know, we have another item coming up later, and I, it's so hard to hear conversations and see children holding signs and, just the tone while we absolutely hear you, we have to address this, and we're trying. And I don't, you know, there's many times on this council, you just have to make really tough decisions and hope that you're doing the best thing for everyone, for the city. And I applaud Councilmember Kitchen for, she's the first one. We're all going to face this. We're all going to have to have, and we should. We all, every single council member should have one of these in their district, and it's going to be extremely hard for every single one of us. And so I will support this, and I hope that we can do, I know that we can do everything. We will do everything within our power to mitigate all of your concerns.
Further discussion on the dais? Yes, Councilmember Ellis?
I also want to say thanks to Councilmember Kitchen for leading the charge on this and for allowing your cosponsors in the original resolutions to take an active part in what this would turn out to be. This is just one part of the formula. A lot of the reasons that people are homeless and moving into South Austin or Southwest Austin, as I've been able to see, is because the services have been centralized in one location. And I think that makes sense on some level as far as, you know, concentration of services strategy, but it's true that there are people all over Austin that are experiencing homelessness. And we have been having a lot of conversations. I know you may not see them all on the dais because they're happening in our offices and our subquorums about trying to make sure that things are clean and trying to make sure people are connected with healthcare services. So we definitely take your words to heart. We know the things that you're experiencing are extremely traumatic, and our heart goes out to you for that, and we are working extremely hard to try to solve these problems. And this particular shelter is just a part of that formula, and we're going to keep working for you, and we're going to keep advocating to make sure that homeless people are able to connect to services. But we do have a hard job ahead of us, working on healthcare services, access to mental healthcare services, and addiction treatments, and those things are extremely hard, as Mayor Protem was saying, for us as a city to be able to tackle in a truly comprehensive way. But we know that with our guidance that we've gotten from the National Alliance to End Homelessness, that a shelter like this with these types of services for these types of individuals is the best direction for us right now. So, thank you.
Further discussion on the dais? The motion is to approve this matter with the direction given, and I assume if there's an issue with respect to any of these directions and the efficacy, bring that back to the council. Is that okay? All right, let's take the vote. Those in favor of these three items, please raise your hand. Those opposed? It is unanimous, and it passes. All right, council, we're a little past 5:30. There are some items I want to see if we can take care of quickly and let people go home. So let me check on this.